If one dedicates to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone tonight to our council meeting and your council meeting. And it's good to see everybody here with us tonight. Just a reminder, some housekeeping things. If you're here for a public hearing, when the public hearing comes up, you can come up to the mic and speak. We give you a four minutes time limit. That way, everybody gets a chance to speak and say what they want to say. The red light or the green light will come on. You got about two and a half, or three and a half minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you got about 30 seconds to wrap it up. And when the red light comes on, we ask you kindly move away from the podium and let somebody else come up. If you're here for the public hearing, I mean for citizen comment period, the same rules apply. Just if you're here for citizen comment period, this is your chance to tell council what you want us to hear. We're not going to be giving any feedback to you. We're not going to get any debate with you. It'll just be your chance to speak to us. We'll take notes and if you want to meet with one of us, you can meet with us afterwards. With that, it comes to the adoption of our meeting agenda. Do we have, has everybody had a chance to look over the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Haas Sutter. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then the next item, item number four is matters from the mayor. I've just got one thing tonight. I just wanted to let everybody know that Wednesday, March 30th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., downtown Waynesboro, downtownwaynesboro.org is having an event. It's tour of the town, eat, drink, and play. Tickets are $35. You can order your tickets and the events start at 4:00 p.m. There's 12 participating downtown merchants. They'll have activities, small bites, beverages, and shopping, and a special concert outside of the Wayne Theater to conclude the event. So, a good event, come out and support the downtown businesses in downtown Waynesboro. And that's all I have for matters from mayor tonight. Item number five is matters from council members. Dr. Haas Sutter, you're going.
Well, as many of you can see, I have a face now. I have a smile. We are in the green. I said at our last meeting that when the CDC county map said that we were in the green, then I would take my mask off here in meetings. That doesn't mean that it's not right to wear masks if people feel comfortable. And certainly, I know in my workplace in my office, I'm continuing to wear a mask. I had it around my neck when I walked in here, even forgot about it. But that doesn't mean it's all good news. We have heard about, you know, numbers going up elsewhere in the world. And so, stay tuned. And if that number turns orange again, let alone red, you'll see my mask reappear. And I encourage you to sort of keep abreast of what's going on locally and then nationally as well. As a sober reminder, we are now at over 975,000 deaths in this country from COVID. So, it is very likely that this week, or perhaps next, we will cross that million death mark, which is a very sobering thing. So, keep that in mind and think about those families. With 330 million Americans, that's one in 330 Americans has died from COVID. So, that's, that's a staggering number. And as a reminder, looking at the CDC site, they summarized the numbers in January, the latest, you know, that they had the full month's numbers. And the likelihood of testing positive, you were 3.5 times more likely to test positive in January if you were unvaccinated. And more notably, you were 21 times more likely to die from COVID if you were unvaccinated in January in this country. So, just a reminder, vaccines are safe and effective and available. And if you have not availed yourself of the first or the booster, please consider doing so. We are likely to hear sometime this week about a fourth booster. And that sounds like it's going to be focused mainly on folks over 65. But again, we'll wait until we have the CDC recommendations when they come out. But, so some good news, but also some sobering things. I was going to also push the tour of the town. That should be an interesting event. Hopefully, the weather will turn more spring-like again, but looking forward to that. And that's all I got. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Haas Sutter. Anyone else have anything? All right. So, we'll move on to item number six, and that's consider adopting the consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to review the agenda? Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Haas Sutter. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you all. And then item number seven is to issue some proclamations and Mr. or Doc, yeah, Mr. Hamp, I believe you're going to lead me in this, aren't you?
Yes, sir, I will. Our first proclamation is to proclaim March as Social Service Workers Month. You may recall that last month, we acknowledged the work that eligibility workers do in social services. This month, we recognize the other side of the House, if you will, and these are the folks who work in the field attending to individuals or children and families who are in crisis. So, the folks who investigate claims of adult abuse or child abuse, neglect, folks who facilitate foster care, folks who provide care and support to families who are in crisis, and folks who run our adoption program. Last year, those folks responded to about 5,100 calls reporting allegations of either adult abuse and neglect, exploitation, or child abuse and neglect and exploitation. And so, they're unfortunately busy folks in our community. And much like other municipal departments, they're understaffed and challenged presently to attract and retain qualified workers to do this difficult work. So, at this time, especially as we come out of a period of public health crisis or pandemic, which added a layer of stress to families, it's appropriate to recognize these individuals for the loyal work and the care and compassion that they extend to adults and families and children in our community. I don't think anybody from DSS is here this evening, but they were very appreciative for the work that the council did acknowledging eligibility workers, and I suspect they'll be equally appreciative of this proclamation.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. The next proclamation declares April 10th through the 16th as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. These are oftentimes and unfortunately the unsung or under-recognized individuals in the, in our public safety team. Obviously, they're the point of first contact for, again, individuals and families in crisis who are calling for help, and they do a remarkable job of remaining calm and well-trained with, and deliver service with compassion and accuracy, either rendering instruction for the caller on the line or dispatching the appropriate professionals, either the fire, first aid, or police, and in some cases, two or three, all three of those agencies. So, again, April 10th through the 16th, we'd like to recognize the very capable and essential employees that we have who take those 911 calls and then work with our other public safety agencies to attend to the needs in the community. Item 7C is to recognize National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week. This occurs April 10th through the 16th. The city of Waynesboro is served by one animal control officer, but supported by the other patrol officers who fill in or assist when that individual is either not on duty or needs assistance, or has confronts a problem that requires assistance. So, that function is delivered from the police department. Really, the individual attends to helping people and pets in our community. They protect the community from dangerous animals. They do public education and help pet owners understand better how to care for and treat animals, and really just tries to enhance the pet ownership experience in the community and also protect the community from animals that escape care and attention. So, we'd like to recognize that individual as well. And finally, April 10th through the 16th is national, excuse me, April 4th through the 10th is National Public Health Week. Since 1995, the American Public Health Association, through sponsorship of National Public Health Week, has educated the public policymakers and public health professionals about issues important to improving the public's health. The Central Shenandoah Health District, that agency that serves our catchment, its mission is to protect and promote health and the well-being of residents in the central Shenandoah Valley. The Central Shenandoah Health District serves the counties of Augusta, Bath, Highland, Rockbridge, Rockingham, the cities of Unavista, Harrisonburg, Lexington, Stanton, and Waynesboro, with a combined population estimated to be more than 308,000 citizens. The public health professionals that work in that organization help our communities prevent, prepare for, withstand, and recover from the impact of a full range of health threats, including disease outbreaks such as COVID-19, natural disasters, and disasters caused by human activity. So, this, this is an occasion to recognize our partners. There's a portion of our annual operating budget that contributes. We're obligated to do that under law. But nonetheless, I think you'll recognize that the Central Shenandoah Health District performs important work. They helped with vaccinations for COVID. They help with flu vaccinations and offer attending regular care to individuals in our community as well. So, we'd like to recognize those folks. And I think Aubrey Morris is here this evening, perhaps to receive. You're welcome to receive the proclamation, and if you have comments, you're welcome to make some comments from the podium.
I'd just like to say thank you for recognizing us. It's been a really long two years. We certainly couldn't have executed our mission without the city of Waynesboro, so thank you for your support.
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. All right, item number eight is the second consideration and adoption of an ordinance to rezone Zero Ivy Street, Waynesboro, Virginia, from RS 12, single-family residence large lots to RS 7, single-family residence small lots. The ordinance was introduced and seconded and then tabled at our previous meeting. Mr. Hamp.
So, yes, sir, that's correct. The council properly introduced, seconded, and discussed the ordinance and then tabled the item. So, this evening, we need a motion, a second, and a vote to untable, and then you can move to formal consideration of the ordinance. And I think that Mr. Jude Day furnished a response to the question that sort of gave genesis to the tabling, and my sense is that the council has sufficient information to move forward. So, a motion to untable, a second, and then a vote, and then consider the matter formally.
Okay. Is there a motion to untable the matter?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short.
And I will second that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Haas Sutter. Any discussion? All in favor of untabling this matter, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you. Now, all in favor of adopting the ordinance, say aye.
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 You've got a first and a second.
You'll need to then now have a motion, a first, a motion, and a second, and discuss them on the ordinance.
Okay. It was moved and seconded last time.
But you tabled it.
But you tabled it. So, we didn't.
We did both last time, which seems.
So, we untabled. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance of rezoning from RS 12 to RS 7?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
You oppose? Motion's for, or for one. Item number nine is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance amending the City Code, Chapter 1, Section 1 dash, 1 through 12, ward boundaries of the city of Waynesboro, Virginia voting wards. Mr. Hamp.
Yes, sir. This is the decennial redistricting, and you've received this presentation on two previous occasions. I think if we can just open the public hearing and then, this ordinance was introduced, seconded, and discussed at the previous meeting, can they simply call the question, or do they need to introduce, second, and discuss tonight?
We can call the question if we could allow the court to.
Okay.
Open public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Hereby I open the second public hearing for redistricting.
No one has signed up to speak.
I hereby close the public hearing for redistricting.
So, Ms. Michelson advises to, we need to afford an opportunity for further discussion tonight, if there is any.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion?
I can make the motions, call for a second, have discussion, and then vote? Is that what you're saying?
Okay, just call the question.
Okay, so I'll make that, I'll make the motion to approve the ward boundary adjustments as, as depicted through the public hearing process.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you all very much. That brings us to item number 10. Item number 10 is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating $31,641. Mr. McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The $31,641 is made up of two ordinances, one for $21,543. This is actually four-for-life funds that we received in the previous year, went into our fund balance, and the first aid crew has now spent them on eligible expenditures. So, we're recommending appropriation of these funds so they can be sent to, sent to the first aid crew. Since those funds did go into fund balance, this will need to be read twice. The second ordinance is $10,098 of restricted fund balance from the sheriff's restricted fund balance account, and also some additional compensation board funds received for the sheriff that he would like to appropriate by additional supplies.
Okay.
Have any questions? I'd be happy to answer them now.
Is there a motion to introduce appropriating $31,641? Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any discussion? All right, this motion will carry over till our April 11th meeting. Item number 11 is to consider adopting five appropriation ordinances totaling $57,658. Mr. McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The largest ordinance in this, in these five items are, is $47,857 in coronavirus emergency supplement funding. These are separate and distinct from any ARPA funds that we've received or any CARES funds that we received. This is a grant that the police department applied for separately, and it's to help mitigate and supplement funding in the police department for measures related to COVID-19. There are also funds of $4,855 to the water fund. This is for the sale of copper and spare meters, to appropriate those funds in the water fund to be used for operating expenses. $2,600 in miscellaneous donations. These were two separate donations, one for $2,500 and one for $100 for National Police Week. $1,939 of losses reimbursed by insurance. This was for some repairs that needed to be made at the cemetery fence, and this is less the deductible. So, the repairs were about $2,900, $3,000, and we received $1,939 from our insurance company to repair the fence, and then $407 in state Supreme Court reimbursements for transports of inmates, and then $100 of restitution. So, it's $307 of Supreme Court reimbursement and $100 of restitution, 407 in total.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Haas Sutter. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion?
Mr. Short.
Mr. Short. And I wrote Allen, too, so, Mr. Short. Mr. Short, thank you, Mr. Short. Sure. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you all. Item number 12 is to consider introducing three appropriation ordinance, providing sufficient funds for construction of Sunset Park located at former landfill off of Sixth Street, and consider setting a public hearing for April 25th, 2022, to receive public comment on the proposed ordinance. Ordinance number 12, appropriation ordinance for $125,690 from the general sign fund balance to the CIP fund. Ordinance 12B is appropriate $350,000 in categorical aid, V dot, and CIP funds, and then 12C appropriate $2,014,600 in American Rescue Plan funds to the CIP fund. Mr. Hamp.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. So, the question whether, at present, the CIP and the Sunset Park are contained in the city manager's recommended budget. I was asked whether it would be possible to withdraw the Sunset Park project from the CIP and from the budget process to afford it sort of separate and distinct consideration. And it's absolutely possible to do that. We begin that process this evening with these three ordinances. There are three ordinances because, as you can see, the sources of funds are from three distinct categories. Because the total appropriation exceeds $2 million, which in aggregate exceeds 1% of your budget, the council is obligated to, under state law, hold a public hearing on the matter. So, this evening, the council's asked first to introduce, second, and discuss the ordinances, and then set a public hearing for April 25th, at which time the council can give final consideration to adoption. And once that occurs, there's a 10-day waiting period. But essentially, that would furnish sufficient funds to construct the park, and staff would conclude design efforts and move directly into bidding the construction of the park. And so, that would be, there's some acceleration that occurs because of the separate consideration. It does not disturb in any way. We'll have to modify the content of the budget, but we would just proceed with the budget as on the schedule and path and process that we're currently on, simply without the, this If you have other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Nope, doesn't sound like it. Is there a motion to introduce this ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Dr. Haas Sutter. Any discussion?
So, Mr. Allen, there is not at this point. I would intend to include this item on the work session as we had previously intended to do. And I think unless the council feels differently, that information is still relevant and beneficial to the body's consideration of the project. So, my intent is to deliver a report as part of the April 5th budget work session regarding the concerns that the council raised, you in particular, regarding public safety. But tonight, I don't have any new information for you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. All right, this ordinance will be considered again at our April 25th business meeting, so it carries over until our April 25th. At that time, council will also hold a public hearing to introduce the ordinance prior to adoption. Item number 13, consider appointing a candidate to the Central Virginia Planning District Commission as a citizen representative. Mr. Hamp.
Mr. Jim Shaw has submitted his name for consideration. This is a term, an unexpired three-year term that would end June 30th of 2023.
Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Jim Shaw to the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission as a citizen representative? Thank you, Mr. Allen.
I'd love to second that.
Mr. Allen, motion? Ms. Williams, second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you very much. Item number 14 is considering, is to consider nominating a Waynesboro representative for election to the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission Executive Committee. Mr. Hamp.
The council's asked to place Mr. Terry Short's name and nomination to the executive committee.
And my understanding is Terry's already serving on this committee, part of this committee, right?
The treasurer.
Okay. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Terry Short to this committee? Thank you, Mr. Allen.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, Dr. Haas Sutter. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries five oh. Thank you. And then this brings us to item number 15, correspondence, communications, correspondence, and calendar. Mr. Hamp.
Yes, sir. I have two items, a reminder of the April 5th budget work session, and then an additional employee recognition, recognition. April 3rd through the 9th is National Library Week, and we would take this opportunity to recognize the good folks who work in our library. Obviously, public libraries do things like connect citizens to broadband, computers, programs, classes, books, movies, video games, and more. I think that if you think about Waynesboro, our public library, much like our park system, is a big part of our identity as a community. And I think it's a good opportunity to recognize the individuals who work in that facility and work very hard to think creatively and help the library evolve into a modern community center and a way to not only support the literacy, imparting of knowledge, but also the community gathering function that libraries serve. So, recognize our library, we're anticipating Public Library Week beginning April 3rd. And that's all that I have this evening.
Do we have to officially recognize that we received the school board?
I appreciate you doing that. It was, receipt of that superintendent's recommended budget is included under the consent agenda, but I do appreciate you making specific mention of that. We will invite Dr. Castle to present. I believe the plan is to have him come on December 11th and provide a summary overview. He's, December 11th, no.
Hopefully before that.
April 11th.
Okay.
April, thank you. April 11th, and present an overview of the budget. It's been a while since Dr. Castle was in front of the body. I think there are a lot of exciting things going in our system, and I think this is a good budget, I would say, for the schools, and so it would be good to hear. But thank you for acknowledging that.
Okay. All right, and then that brings us to item number 16, which is our citizen comment period. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
We do, in fact. Ms. Evelyn Cotton.
Thank you, Ms. Cotton.
Thank you. You're welcome to take three minutes and.
[laughing]
I'm sorry. I couldn't help myself.
I like it.
Mr. Craig Scott.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable council folks.
Good evening. That's a, I'd say you got a tag.
I come to, I've just been a wher of the Sunset Park. I see it as a malinvestment. I've always used this theme, efficient. I come to, I've just been aware of the Sunset Park. I see it as a malinvestment. I've always used this theme, efficiency is compassion. I see these monies can be more opportune, opportune usage. Example, city employees, super teachers, social workers, rather than just getting a plaque for some insight or endeavor or idea or extra work, they get a reward, a stipend, you know, way to go, attaboy. Instead of an attaboy, you get an actual check. I see also these monies can be used for repurposing infrastructure, safety. Safety is cardinal. Quality of life is cardinal. I also see that for lowering and maybe repurposing buildings that are in disheveled state. Opportunity zones, enterprise zones, lowering property taxes, using some of those monies for there. Also, maybe more incentive for employees in the city council, maybe for charities, animal welfare. Rise. Example, those monies could be used, because a child's mind is certainly more valuable than a park, and we are blessed with some of the most beautiful parkland in, in the world, not only in our country, around here in this beautiful Shenandoah that we are blessed with. So also, there's another factor. There's two more factors about the park I don't know if it's been considered. There's ongoing costs for maintenance and et cetera, safety, security, and the other intangibles. Also, has there been environmental impact? If the landfill is being torn up, as it has to be for storm drains and other purposes for it, what are the cost and ongoing cost and liabilities on that down the road, next week, next month, next decade? So you have all these factors that are not being incorporated in this. So again, efficiency is compassion. You want to lower and broaden the tax base for the people, the housing. A hard-coded cost, especially for the poor, is, is property taxes. This is something we can do. We can lower it, we can set aside, as I said, for enterprise zones. Or use the monies for rewarding especially poor homeowners to fix up their properties and maybe get a refund or a rebate. And the quality of life would be a virtuous circle. You bring more people, and again, raising the taxes, but also the quality of life for the poorest in our community, and all, all folks, because we all benefit when we see a nice house, and the neighbors are happy, et cetera. So you have that virtuous circle and better quality of health, and all these, these monies, this is an inert object. It's lovely, but we have, it just, it's non-value add at the end of the day. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Mr. Dwight Williams. Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Dwight Williams, twenty-eight eighteen, Jefferson Lane. Craig, I think stole most of what I was going to say, but I'm going to say it anyway. I think I speak for a lot of people here who are here currently in this meeting and those who are not. When I say that we are against any kind of construction of Sunset Park, we have enough parks as it is in the city. We got to maintain all those parks. That costs money. We're coming out of COVID, two years of lockdowns essentially. People have lost their jobs, people don't have a whole lot of money, and we're about to go throw away two and a half million dollars on a park that contrary to public opinion is not going to bring revenue into the city. It's nice, it's cool, your kids can use it, your dogs can, you can walk your dogs in it, but that's it. It's not going to help this city at all. We have more important expenditures for the city. We need infrastructure, right? You know, more sewers. Heck, when it snowed this past Christmas, we didn't have enough snowplows or snowplow drivers. Why don't we hire more people like that and buy more snowplows? Why don't we give more money to our sheriff's office, our law enforcement, our police, our EMTs? We need a fire station on the west side of town, let's put it towards that. That's a much better use of two and a half billion dollars than throwing it away on a park. A park that is not going to generate revenue is not going to help the city. So the taxpayer, I'd rather see you put it towards something that actually matters. If you really feel strongly about building a park in the city, I would suggest you get a coffee can and go door-to-door and ask for donations. But I know as a taxpayer and many who are presently here and those who are not, we don't want to see another park in the city. What we want to see is better infrastructure investment, better investment in our law enforcement. So with that, please do not irresponsibly spend this money that has been entrusted to you. The responsible thing to do is to not consider building another park in Waynesboro. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Julia Howchins. I live at fourteen twenty-five Harding Avenue. I moved back to this lovely little town a year, little over a year ago. I lived here, grew up here, left for fifty years and came back. And I moved in the neighborhood that I'm in because my mother has been there eighty-eight years. I took a little house behind her, purchased it, completely remodeled it, made it a nice little home for us. But I have a neighbor that plays music so loud, some days nine hours of this bang, 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 outside in his shed, and it actually jars the windows in my house. I've heard about the noise ordinance in Waynesboro at least a hundred times. I've called the police department many times. Each time I hear the noise ordinance, doesn't allow them to do anything to help. I'm here to beg you to help me. It actually makes my heart hurt after a while, that constant banging. And my husband has a heart condition, and it causes his blood pressure to go up, and it does have very unhealthy effects on your body. And I need your help. We've asked him to turn them down, and he only turns it up a little bit more, and he is very well aware of the noise ordinance. He tells us he has the right to play that music as loud as he wants until ten o'clock every night. So I'm here asking you to please look at that noise ordinance and help those of us who are trying to live a peaceful life and are not allowed to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Adrian Young. I'm sorry, Ms., Ms. Adrian Young.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Hamp. Thank you for letting me come.
Can you pull that, yeah?
Thank you. Is that better?
Not, not everybody can reach Dwight reaches.
My name is Adrian Young, and I live at two thirty-seven Skyland Avenue, and I'm a member of the Waynesboro chapter of Virginia Organizing. And on behalf of the chapter, I'm here to share about a campaign that we're working on to improve conditions for renters in the city. To work toward the goal of improving housing equity for everyone in Waynesboro, we're asking the city to create an easy-to-use and responsive complaint line for tenants to report when their landlords are not maintaining their property. The current process is confusing and not accessible. We are also asking the city to create a rental inspection program where landlords will be required to have their units inspected by the city and must seek safe housing standards. The idea for the inspection program came directly from Waynesboro's twenty-eighteen comprehensive plan, which identifies substandard rental housing as a major issue for the city. This issue is very important to me, as Mr. Hamp mentioned, social service workers. I'm a human service worker, and I am a case manager that assists people who are low-income, recovering, or coming out of crisis, and a lot of times we're trying to find housing. And over the past year, I have been aware of mushrooms growing out of the ceiling in an apartment. I have seen active mold growing out of vents in apartments. In just December alone, I went to view an apartment with a client, with the landlord present, and there were two basketball-sized holes in the living room wall, and the radiator pipes were not covered. And I asked the landlord, are you going to be able to fix some of this? And he told me he wasn't going to make any cosmetic repairs. Now, if he doesn't want to fix the holes in the wall, fine, but not covering a radiator pipe is a fire hazard and is dangerous to not only this client, but this client's child. And we're asking people to live in places like this, not Taj Mahals, not, not high-end condos, but you shouldn't have to live with mold, and you shouldn't have to live somewhere that's making you sick or could injure you or could cause a fire, and not just be damaging for you, but the neighbors around you. So in closing, we just wanted to thank all city council members and Mr. Hamp for meeting with us to discuss our campaign, and we're encouraged to hear that there is shared concern on the council about this issue. We look forward to the next steps, including with meeting Mr. Hamp and receiving data on housing complaints that the city has on file. We also look forward to meeting with council members again in May to continue our discussion and work together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
Howdy. My name is Nora. I want to share my experience as a renter in Waynesboro and why this campaign is important to me and important that it's seen through. My partner and I were forced to move out of our home in two thousand and eighteen. Our landlords were renovating their second home and had decided to move back onto the property instead of staying with family. We had friends who were renting a two-bedroom from Brandon Lot Apartments and who were willing to let us room with them, thankfully. We lived there for almost three years, and during that time, we struggled to keep away the mold in our bathroom and windows. We made calls to the front desk and filed maintenance requests online whence that was available, but there was always a chance that no one would respond. So for the most part, we were made to deal with it, the mold and the breathing problems it caused us on our own. The last year my partner and I lived there, we stayed underneath and witnessed rampant child abuse, domestic violence that was never dealt with by my landlord of the apartment complex despite the multiple times we notified them. There were many times that we were forced to get involved, which left my household constantly reeling with paranoia, hyper vigilance, and PTSD from resurfaced trauma. We did what we were supposed to do, we did what we were told we were supposed to do, and nothing helped us or that kid. We were helpless. I believe that there are many other Waynesboro residents dealing with similar issues with their apartments and landlords, and we hope to have your support on closing the gaps that allow some landlords to take advantage of their tenants.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Thank you, council members, for letting me join and listening. My name is Philip Soals. Until recently, I was a city resident living in the Park Villa Apartments on Commerce Avenue. I had to move out of Waynesboro because the conditions of my apartment were so terrible. I wanted to come before you deny to tell you why this campaign is important to me. Before moving into that apartment, I was homeless for five years, almost five years. I was desperate to get off the streets when I moved into the apartment in eighteen. I didn't know how bad the conditions were in the apartment until I signed the lease and moved in. Throughout my time there, I had terrible bug infestations, no matter how clean I kept my apartment. At night, if I would get up to get a glass of water and cut on the lights, there would be tons of bugs flock into the kitchen towards the light. I hardly ever used my stove because there was hundreds of bugs inside of it. Not once did my landlord send an exterminator out or even give me a bug killer that I could use myself. Near the end of my time there, I started noticing signs of mice and found out they were coming from under the sink. The whole kitchen was a disaster. Two of the burners on my stove didn't work, and the ones that did work would fill my kitchen up with smoke. There was no ventilation over the stove either. I often just ate food that I didn't need to be, that didn't need to be cooked because it was such a health hazard. There wasn't an AC in the apartment, which was hard to deal with given all my health conditions. Although all of this was terrible to live with, the thing that forced me to move out was the black mold in my bathroom. Near the end of my time there, at the apartment, there was black mold growing from the ceiling all the way down to the sink. I would have to hold my breath every time I went into the bathroom because of the mold messed with my asthma so bad. I was bleaching down the walls five times a week to try to kill the mold. It would just grow back the next day. I heard from many of my neighbors that they experienced the same thing. I put in maintenance requests with my landlord to fix these issues, but most of the time they went unresolved. It would take weeks or months to hear anything back, and sometimes I got no response at all. It felt like my landlord didn't care that I was suffering. This is why we need more protections for renters and oversight for landlords. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Soals.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Emily Smart. I know a lot of y'all have heard me speak about the housing stuff before. I'm here today because roughly forty percent of the Waynesboro population is renters, and over thirty percent of the rental properties available to us are substandard living conditions, according to the report that the city of Waynesboro did. There are landlords in this city who are not maintaining their properties up to the legal building code, so they're technically not abiding by the laws that they are supposed to abide by in order to be landlords in this city. We would really like to see a rental inspection program that requires these landlords to be up to code, because as a reminder, the renters of Waynesboro, we are your constituents as well. We pay taxes as well. We pay our property taxes through our vehicles, and the property taxes for the properties we live in are included in the price of our rental. So we're really contributing to the local economy as well, and we're your constituents as well, and we'd like to see some of the renters' concerns be addressed as well. Homeowners are not the only constituents of Waynesboro. Renters are constituents of Waynesboro as well, we're taxpaying citizens as well. I wasn't planning to speak on the park today, but I'm glad some other folks brought it up because I was under the impression that the city council felt as though we could not afford a rental inspection program, but now I see we've got two and a half million dollars to spare. That seems like a much better place to put that two and a half million dollars, if you ask me. Turns out, we can afford a rental inspection program so that forty percent of Waynesboro's population isn't living with mold and bugs. It's difficult being somebody who doesn't have lots of money and can't afford to buy a home and being stuck in this renter cycle where your rent is being increased higher than your wages are each year. It's hard to keep up with that, and it's even harder to feel like the politicians in Washington, they don't care if my son and I have a safe place to live. They don't care. So I would hope that my local politicians and my local community and my local representatives would care about the forty percent of their constituents who are trying to just simply have a safe, affordable, healthy place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nora.
Everybody else made my job a little easier. We did not plan this either, so. I want to talk about city council's vision or the lack thereof to be prepared for long It's budget season, and while we know there are things needed each year that we may be, that may be new because of attrition or growth, a two-point-five-million-dollar park is not one of them. What happened to the comprehensive plan the city spent thousands on to get a consultant to tell council what we need in place for our focus and tax dollars? What happened to the numerous conversations and commitments made from Luke Jadae and Jim Shaw when Rais sat down with them by other community leaders to the table to discuss Port Republic Historic District? From those meetings, it was shared, there was money in the budget that was earmarked to the historic district of Port Republic Road. The Black Cemetery, the sidewalks, Florence Avenue Bridge, and the homeless makeshift camp off Elk Circle was at the top of the list. It was decided that the part, that part of the money would be used to hire yet another consultant to focus primarily on a comprehensive plan for Port Republic Road Historic District. Then Rais was told Sharon Norai would be on the committee to decide- Then Rouse was told Sharon Norah would be on the committee to decide on which consultant would be selected. In layman's terms for us, that meant nothing was going to happen, and it didn't. We're here two years without a plan. Here we are with another budget discussion, and Sunset Park is at the top of the discussion to sink $2.5 million into that park. We have four parks. They need to be tended to and invested in. This council has allowed Basic Park to just be ran down. Yes, I know, there's a deal with Saka. However, city council, you need to hold them to the fire to take care of what they committed to. If they're not going to be committed to it, then we need to address Basic Park, which is in Ward A. What good stewardship is it to spend $2.5 billion on a park in a low-income community with an outdated and old elementary school? Why put $2.5 million into a park that the road into the city needs to be repaid? Sidewalks need to be repaired or replaced. When does city council care about the people in Ward A and the low-income parts of Ward C? You keep building up the west end of town and allowing these houses to go up, that is outpricing locals. This increase increases the homeless problem, but you aren't thinking about if you bring in these families that children have to go to school. Two elementary schools are falling down, but yet, we're going to put $2.5 million into a park. We have become a bedroom community with a council concern with making Waynesboro a hub for Charlottesville and Harrisonburg on the backs of residents' tax money. I thank y'all for your time, and I hope that you will pay attention to the things that have been discussed with you tonight.
Thank you, Ms. McGuffin.
That's it, sir.
That's it? Okay. Thank you all very much for your comment tonight, and that brings us to the last meeting here. Is there a motion to close the meeting? Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, all opposed say nothing.